Okay, y'all ready, ready? You can have a public meeting in order. Um, we'll roll this meeting.
Yes, sir, Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor. Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Ginn.
Here.
Here.
And Height. Height.
Reverend.
And Taylor, just join. Taylor, I'm calling the roll. Are you here?
Yes.
Obviously, you're... Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the council member Ginn is going to lead us in prayer, please.
Lord Jesus, we thank you for keeping our council members safe from the virus and for the scheduling that is being made in North Little Rock for the COVID-19 tests. And also, we're grateful for, um, that our city has been protected from the destruction of any recent protesters. You're able to do more than we could ever even ask or think. And I ask for the safety of our mayor, each council member, city clerk, city attorney. Let your angels in camp surround about each leader and city employee in the city of North Little Rock. That's including the fire departments, the police department, the finance, the department, the traffic and criminal judges. Help our small and large businesses succeed in this time before and after the quarantine. And after the happenings in our world during the last few months, if we ever needed you, Lord, it was now. Help us to lean on you for wisdom, guidance, and boldness. And we ask you to help us make right decisions during this difficult time. Let our steps be ordered of you, God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Um, communications, I'm showing four. Anybody want to pull one?
Number two.
Number two. Is that what you said? Okay, we'll pull number two. Any others? All right, how about a motion to accept one, three, and four?
One, three, and four.
Motion by Baxter, second by Height. Uh, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Here, yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Ross, how do you want that read? Ms. Ross.
In its entirety, it's just about the Parks and Rec, uh, public meeting.
Okay, in its entirety.
So, I saw an email about this today from your office. This is being rescheduled. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Were you made aware of that?
I don't know.
So evidently, there's not going to be a Parks Commission meeting this month?
Well, this is a, uh, public hearing, so I don't know if it's the same thing or not.
I just know it came from Julie. That was all I know. I mean, I'm happy to read it.
Yep. Why don't we, uh, uh, hold that for a minute, Debbie? And, uh, Danny, could you step outside and call Terry and see if this is still real? Let's go on in and do legislation.
Can we approve the minutes from the previous meeting first?
Yeah, let's do that. How about a motion on the minutes?
On the second.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes, Ross. White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go into, uh, new business.
Okay. R 2075, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 321 North Elm Street in the city of North Little Rock.
It's for adoption. Second.
A motion, a second. I'm going to call a public hearing. I'm going to call a public hearing on, uh, 2075 and 2076. Is there anyone to speak for 321 North Elm Street or 808 East 17th? No one's in the audience and no one has called in, so I'm going to close the public hearing on the motion on 2075.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. And Height.
Yes.
R 2076, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 808 East 17th Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Baxter and Robinson, first and second. Any discussion? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Taylor. Councilmember Taylor.
His screen frozen.
His frame's frozen.
Okay, uh, Baxter.
Robinson.
Yes.
Uh, Robinson, I'm sorry, yes. May mark off Taylor. Um, Baxter was yes. Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
R 2077, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on any of the, um, liens, uh, against tax collector against certain properties? Boy, I had a hard time getting that out, didn't I? Uh, there's none in the audience and nobody online. I'm going to close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Still frozen. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordinances, O 2053, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing purchase of electric power from Nixterra Energy Power Marketing LLC waiving competitive bidding. First reading.
Who's been reading?
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings on the motion.
Ross. White.
Yes.
Taylor. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Ginn.
Yes.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. How about a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, uh, you, do you want to give us a brief explanation, Mayor?
Second, I think Jason Carter's supposed to be there.
Yeah. Our attorney, Jason Carter, some of you know him, uh, is here to give us a little briefing.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, it's great to be here. It's, uh, uh, as odd as it may be, uh, just seeing you on, on the screen, but it's still good to see you. And, uh, just to give you a brief explanation about what we're doing, uh, what's being proposed with this ordinance is, uh, it's purchasing power. There's, uh, if you'll recall, there's three ways that we buy power. We either, uh, own assets such as, uh, the, the Plum Point Energy Station, Murray Hydro, or Tupines, which accounts for about 60% of our power, uh, depending on how they're performing in a particular year. We contract for power. That accounts for about 30% of our power, uh, in any particular year. And then we go to the market for about 10% of the remaining requirements that we have. And that's often a really good price, but it's also the most volatile price product that we have. So we try to have good contracts in place to make sure that we've got the power that we need. And, uh, within those contracts, some are for only a month in duration, some maybe a year in duration, some are longer than a year. They're longer term contracts. And that's what this contract is. It's a longer term contract for 10 megawatts peak power, 5 megawatts off peak power to begin in January of 2022 and extend through December 31st of 2030. So it's a long-term power contract, but the pricing seems very favorable. And it's actually just an extension of a contract structure that we already have. So it fits neatly within our portfolio and, uh, was recommended by the Risk Management Committee.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. And Height?
Yes.
Did you get Maurice? He's back on, okay.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
Ross, did you say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Um, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2054, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the North Little Rock Electric Department net metering and distribution generation rules. First reading.
Who's been reading?
Second.
A motion to spend all readings on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. Can we have all those rules read to us? Oh, you've got to wait, Mayor.
Say that again.
So, do you going to read all these rules to us tonight about net metering or we don't have this stuff?
No, it's, it's been very well vetted. I, I... Ms. Ross?
Uh, is this, is this... Uh, and I know that Jason Carter's still there and I've talked with him today. Could we just have him explain a little about it? It's, uh, I think he can summarize it very quickly.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
Is this because of this, uh, updated, uh, solar agreement that happened? Is this because of what happened last week?
Let us give you an executive summary and see if you've got any questions after that.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Ross. And, uh, and, uh, Alderman Harris, if, if I can address your question directly is, uh, this, this is not in response to the APSC's decision regarding net metering. Uh, they don't sit with jurisdictional authority over us. Obviously, we stay in tune with their rulings, uh, because they go through good hearing processes and, and sometimes they apply well for us and sometimes they don't. But they're, they're always good food for thought in regulating utilities. So we stay in touch with those, but this is not in reaction to that order. If anything, it's in reaction to Act 464 of 2019, which amended, uh, the Arkansas Renewable Energy Development Act significantly. In particular, the city of North Little Rock has had net metering rules since 2010. We've tried to amend those from time to time to stay current with the law. Uh, one of the things that we were required to do under the 2015 rules was meter aggregate. Uh, that means, meter aggregation simply is taking two or more meters that are owned by the same customer and combining that data, uh, for billing purposes. Uh, in the net metering context, that means that a, um, a, a customer who is downtown may buy other property out on the edge of town to install solar facilities because they can't install them in town and then combine those meters together to offset his, uh, consumption, uh, you know, downtown. So, uh, in, in 2019, we argued pretty strongly that we needed to be alleviated of that meter aggregation requirement and the legislature agreed with us. Uh, our, our purposes in arguing that were threefold. One is that, uh, you know, we don't think that the legislature's the best place to make those rules. We think the city council is the best place to consider and to make those rules. Uh, the second is the financial implications, that we're concerned that, uh, uh, depending on rate structures, that, uh, uh, solar power can result in a subsidy from one customer to another. Uh, and with meter aggregation, it would make that problem bigger, not smaller. So if we're going to try to contain that issue, then, uh, that financial repercussion, then, uh, you know, meter aggregation should not be allowed. The third, uh, issue around is, is just the physical nature of electricity, that if we had, let's just say, 25 customers went out on the edge of town, bought up a bunch of property and each put in 300 kilowatts of electricity like they're, that they would be, uh, allowed to do, all of a sudden, we've got seven and a half megawatts of generation that's all getting dumped into a substation. And, uh, and at 2:00 on a Sunday afternoon, we don't know that the customers who are in that area would consume that electricity. And then if they don't consume that electricity, that means that it flows back out onto the bulk electric system. And that's on transmission lines that we don't own, we don't manage, we don't regulate. And I can't really tell you the financial risk that's related to that because all of those regulations are being written and developed right now. I just know that, uh, that there is a risk, that, uh, uh, CERC takes their responsibility very seriously, uh, in supervising the reliability of the bulk electric system. And, uh, and that's just not something where the regulations have matured to a point that we can really contain that risk. So just for the, for the best interest of the city, that's where we think that it's best to follow the path that we argued for with, uh, Act 464 of 2019 and prohibit, uh, meter aggregation until we can get our arms around these other issues and it makes financial sense for both the city and our customers.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Ross.
I, I think my, you know, talking to Jason, uh, I guess my takeaway is that we're just moving slowly. We're not just jumping in there. And this is not something that can't be reinstated. It's just right now. At this time, this is just something that we need to stop and look at because the unknown costs are possible. So Jason can, he can follow up. If that's just summarizing it up, that's what I got out of everything that I talked to him about. Correct, Jason?
Yes, I, I would agree with that. So there's, it's both, uh, you know, like I was, uh, mentioning earlier, kind of the physical, fiscal or financial ramifications of, of meter aggregation and the physical effect of meter aggregation. Uh, both of those, uh, issues come into play that, that, uh, uh, make it both financially risky and unpredictable from a regulatory standpoint. And we think the best course right now is to prohibit it until we can find more stable ground.
On the motion.
There is no motion.
How about a motion to adopt?
Go move.
Got a motion and a second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter. Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Councilmember Ginn. Did you hear?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. And Mayor?
Yes.
While we've been, uh, conducting city business here, our, Robert Birch is on Channel 7 with a segment about our small business loans.
Yeah, I saw that. He did a great job. He's a good young man. Uh, emergency?
Um, already did.
No emergency?
No, I already did.
Already did. Okay. Uh, next one.
O 2055, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2020 quota ordinance, ordinance number 9197 for the North Little Rock Finance Department. First reading.
Who's been reading?
Got a second, Mr. Baxter. On the motion to spend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Go move.
I'm just looking at you because that's what was...
Oh, we already did it. Go ahead.
Focus.
I get tired.
Okay. Who made the motion to adopt?
Is there a motion to adopt? Mr. Taylor, yes. How about a second? Mr. Harris?
I'd be a bit.
Charlie got the second. Okay.
Okay, on the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White. Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Councilmember Ginn. And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, on the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2056, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance establishing an entertainment district to be known as the Argenta Outdoor Dining District. First reading.
Move to spend the reading.
Second.
A motion and a second. Spend all readings on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. And Height?
Yes. Now, don't we have an amendment?
Yeah, Ms. Ross, you want to make that a motion?
Yes, I amended the new map.
Okay, how about a second? Mr. Height seconded. On the motion to amend with the new map, uh, we just made it a little bit more recognizable, uh, on the motion to amend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
So there's, there's no changes to the map? It's just more recognizable?
Well, we, we run to the assumption that if you, if the building touched the street, uh, then that was good enough, but we just kind of felt more comfortable if, if we encompassed the whole building. Uh, so, uh, we just took in the, to the back of the building instead of the front of the building.
Yes.
Um, Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption as amended.
Okay, got a motion and a second. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Councilmember Ginn. And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Ginn. And Height?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me, um, are we through that?
That one, yes.
Yeah, let me monologue just for a second. We are allowing restaurants throughout the entire city to offer outdoor dining, uh, without any additional, uh, regulations or zoning. Uh, I've told planning that, uh, we need to do everything that we can possibly do to help these restaurants, uh, make a living during this, uh, trying times and that we'll address it in the fall on what kind of, uh, zoning permits that they'll need to get. But right now, for the next, uh, four months, I'd say at least until October, uh, I'm going to leave everything alone, let them have outdoor dining so they can socially distance and, uh, try to make a dollar. Next.
O 2057.
Thank you.[1565.39] Thank you. Ms. Ross?
Just one thing, they may want to also check with ABC because I think there may be some ABC regulation that just requires the city's approval. So I would have them at, at least call ABC just to make sure that they're okay.
Right. And particularly on the ones that are outside of the entertainment district as far as serving alcohol outdoors, they do need to check with the ABC on that because I don't know what the regulations are. So just to make sure they're in compliance with those laws.
I think ABC's already done that, but we'll make sure. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, O 2057, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of a sidewalk requirements of Appendix A, Table 6.1 of Appendix A, Section 4.1.1.3.6 of the zoning ordinance for certain real property located at 3901 John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Please spend the reading.
Say that again, Beth.
Second.
All right, Ms. White did the second. On the motion to spend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Okay, and Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Ms. White, say that one more time. Baxter gave us a second. On the motion.
Motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Ginn. Okay, and Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn. Councilmember Ginn, okay. And Height?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross has her hand up.
Uh, who does? Ms. Ross?
Yes. I was gonna say, this legislation, hopefully, is the last piece of legislation that Hogsmeat Market will have with the city to make their move to Park Hill on JFK. So looking forward to a new, improved with much more parks for Hogsmeat Market on JFK.
Absolutely. Peggy Hogg is one fine businesswoman. I'm excited myself. Public comment, I believe we have one?
Can you go back to communication number two first?
Yeah, what did we decide on that, Chief? Okay, so I'm not gonna call that communication. We will draw it. And there is no Parks meeting in the month of June. Okay, Debbie? Okay. All right, we have public comment.
Yes, sir. This is an email that we received today from Christina Gully. Says, "Good afternoon. Due to a scheduled conference call, I am unable to speak at tonight's meeting. Please share this information with your council members. I welcome Mayor Smith and their support for this event. I humbly ask that each council member share this information with their constituents, local churches, and organizations in their wards. On July 18, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., a free COVID-19 testing event will be held at the Glenview Recreation Center located at 4800 East 19th Street in North Little Rock. All testing will be conducted by the Arkansas Health Department licensed medical professionals. More details will be provided to you in a flyer later this week. Our goal is to reach as many residents as possible. I ask that you share this flyer on your social media page as well. Further information, for further information, she can be reached and Ms. Gully provides a telephone number for that and lists herself as a North Little Rock Community Advocate Volunteer."
Thank you very much. Any other council members have anything? Mr. Height?
I just have a question, and maybe Councilwoman Robinson may know this. Is that testing, is that for everybody or is it only for the people that think they have symptoms or may have been coming in contact with someone?
The testing is for anyone who wants to be tested. And it's gonna be on the park lot. It's a drive-through at Glenview. There will be no entrance into the building.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments? The, I would be remiss if I didn't bring the fact up that Councilmember Baxter looks very handsome in his bow tie tonight. So, looked great, Steve.
Oh, I've got something. I have something.
Oh, Mayor, you might also mention that Councilmember Baxter retired from the...
He did, from the Air National Guard. Congratulations on your retirement, Steve. Job well done. Thanks for guarding our country for all these years. Mr. Height?
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for nudging the people at the Lehman Library and Crystal to do something about opening up the library, even if it's only for using the phone or online or whatever. But they're allowing people to start checking out books, not going into the library, but there's books available. They'll put them on a table outside. But anyway, thank you, Mayor. I give you the credit for nudging Crystal that way.
Thank you. We're taking baby steps there. We're doing the same thing at the Hayes Center. We're really waiting on the governor to go into Phase Two before we look at the Hayes Center. So we'll keep everybody posted. We're trying to do a weekly address on Facebook to let everybody know the newest and latest. So thank you for those kind words. If I don't see anybody else, how about a motion? Mr. Taylor?
I may.
Uh, just one thing, maybe we need to get Jane G in the heater because she's, her screen is always freezing up.
Brady, will you look into that and find out why she keeps freezing? Okay. We'll work with you, Jane. How about a motion to turn, Ms. Ross? How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adjourn, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you all.